It's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the December fourteenth.
November.
Excuse me, November fourteenth, meeting of the Sunderland Planning Board to order. And our first order of business tonight is a public hearing on proposed zoning bylaw changes. So I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the legal notice, please.
Sure, am I reading this whole thing?
The town of Sunderland will hold a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty A, the Zoning Act, Section five, on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM at the Sunderland Town Hall, twelve School Street, Sunderland, Massachusetts, and via Zoom with the following link.
Shall I read?
No.
Okay.
The purpose of this public hearing is to provide interested parties with the opportunity to comment on the proposed revisions to the Sunderland's zoning bylaws. These changes will address standalone battery energy storage facilities and include proposed revisions to Section one twenty-five, Article one, General Provisions two, definitions to add a definition of accessory battery energy storage facilities and standalone battery energy storage facilities, proposed revisions to Section one twenty-five, Article two,
she's gonna.
Use and dimension regulations two, use regulations to address accessory and standalone battery energy storage facilities, and proposed revisions to Section one twenty-five, Article four, special regulations, three large-scale ground-mounted solar electric installations to incorporate accessory and standalone battery energy storage facilities, proposed revisions to Section one twenty-five, Article six, Administration and Enforcement three, special permits to add criterion for assessing the impact on public safety and municipal services and drinking water recharge areas. The complete text of the proposed zoning bylaw revisions is on file with the town clerk at the Sunderland Town Hall, twelve School Street, Sunderland, Massachusetts, and is available for inspection during the regular business hours of the town clerk. And it's submitted by Dana Roscoe, the Chair of the Sunderland Planning Board.
Thank you, Amanda. So we're gonna have a brief presentation on the proposed changes. And we just have to allow Allison from the Franklin Regional Council Governments access to share her screen, and she's going to do a PowerPoint presentation for us. There we go. Cool. Welcome, Allison. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks, of course. Do we, does anyone in the room, or do we just have Larry and Phyllis online?
That's it, just Larry and Phyllis.
Okay.
And Morgan in the corner doing our AV for us.
Okay, great. Well, hello, I'm Allison. I'm a planner with the FERCog, and I've been working with the Sunderland Planning Board on this bylaw update. So I'll just provide a very brief presentation about the changes, provide a little bit of context. So before diving to the specifics of the bylaw update, I just wanted to go over what battery energy storage facilities are and what they're used for. On the right here is an image of a battery storage system in Oleoke. And the containers shown here are the most common way that the batteries are stored. In that system, the excess energy from the solar array is stored by the battery system and then discharged to the grid during the peak grid operating times. And this helps to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels during times of peak demand. Some systems are set up as standalone facilities. So it's just the containers of batteries with no solar arrays, or they're stored in a different way. The image on the bottom right here is from a facility in Province Town. These systems store excess energy directly from the grid instead of the onsite array. And the accessory storage facilities are typically sized just to store the energy that's generated onsite. This zoning bylaw update addresses both types of the facilities I just mentioned, so the standalone and accessory storage facilities, but does not address the residential batteries. You'll still need to get local permits for those if you want to install there. I think the most common ones are those Tesla battery packs. So again, those are not, those are not regulated in this bylaw update. We updated four sections of the bylaw to address battery energy storage facilities. We added definitions for both accessory and standalone facilities, amended the use table to reflect where different types of storage may be cited, amended the large-scale ground-mounted solar electric installations to address battery energy storage facilities, and then we amended some of the special permit criteria. The definition updates are pretty straightforward, but I'll provide more detail about the changes to the other three sections in the following slides. So for changes to the use table, the main takeaway here is that any type of battery storage facility, whether it be accessory to a large-scale solar array or standalone, it's only allowed in the C-two district, and that's the zoning district up in the northeast corner of the town. It's near Long Plain Road and is bound by the railroad tracks. So batteries are hazardous materials. So by allowing them in the C-two district, we're not outright prohibiting them, but rather protecting Sunderland's important ecosystems and water resources. Putting any type of battery storage facility in the C-two district will require a special permit from the Planning Board. And I also wanted to note that regulations for large-scale solar arrays are unchanged so long as they don't have any battery components. So a array sized in between one thousand square feet and four acres require a special permit in all districts except for the C-two district where site plan review is required. And arrays, and arrays sized larger than four acres require a special permit in all districts. Again, the standalone facilities are only allowed in the C-two district, and they cannot be sized larger than four acres. In terms of updating the language included in the large-scale ground-mounted solar electric installations bylaw, most of the changes were pretty straightforward in that the text now makes references to large-scale solar arrays with or without battery storage facilities. Some specific changes, or some changes that are specific to battery storage facilities include setbacks. So any storage facility must be, say, at least seven hundred fifty feet away from any water supply well or septic system. All systems must be fenced and have a fence with a minimum of an eight-foot height. They also must be contained, so that means that they must be placed on a pad. Sometimes there are other components that should also have secondary containment. So we put that language in. We also have a training requirement. So the operator or owner of installation must provide annual training to Sunderland's emergency personnel. This has become pretty standard with these bylaw updates. We saw this in Carver and Medway. It's just important to make sure that the local emergency personnel are appropriately trained. And then we also edited the special permit criteria. So we edited one of the criteria to indicate that the Planning Board will also consider how the energy storage facilities will impact drinking water recharge areas in addition to drainage or stormwater management. And then we added a new criterion to note that the Planning Board will consider the facility's impact on public safety and municipal services. So that's a brief summary of the bylaw updates. The next steps for the Planning Board is to bring the changes to town meeting in the spring. Then if passed by voters, they'll submit it to the Attorney General's Office for review, and they must respond within ninety days. And then it can become an official change in the town. And as Amanda noted, the full text of the revisions are available with the town clerk if you'd like to take a closer look. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Allison, for that synopsis of the work that we've been doing on the battery storage, standalone battery storage bylaw. I wonder if you could just speak briefly about the experience that Wendell had?
Sure. So earlier this year, Wendell worked with the FERCog to amend their large-scale solar bylaw to also incorporate accessory battery energy storage facilities and large-scale, or sorry, standalone facilities. And in their original draft, they sought to outright prohibit them. And when they submitted that to the Attorney's General's Office, they came back and said that was not allowed because it was not in the best interest of the public welfare. We do have some, some pretty, you know, necessary clean energy goals. So I think the state is trying to balance those needs. So we do need to allow battery storage facilities in some way, is really what we learned from that.
Right. And so the way that we've addressed it is by allowing it in the C-two district. So it is, it is allowed by special permit in the C-two district. And I would, I would just say that this is not an abstract or an academic exercise. The town of Sunderland has actually been approached by standalone battery storage facility entities that are interested in locating in Sunderland and have approached the town about what their bylaws and restrictions would be. So it seems like it's in the town's best interest to have a plan in place and not be caught flat-footed. And that's why we reached out to Allison and the COG to help us make these proposed bylaw changes.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely. That's why you're here.
I guess to Allison. Hadley bylaws, Hadley bylaws right now say no freestanding storage facilities, just attached to solar. That may not make it in the end, but is that a stopgap that Sunderland might be able to use, you know, until the Attorney General figures out exactly what they're gonna allow and what they don't allow? For right now, doesn't Hadley have, isn't Hadley restricting to just ones that are attached to their own solar facilities?
Yeah, okay. So they're saying that you can have the accessory batteries as accessory storage, but they're prohibiting the standalone facilities. I am, oh, go ahead.
They can have a standalone, but it's gonna be, the power has to be from.
As an accessory.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is, it's an accessory. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just double checking. I haven't heard about that. I did read in the paper a couple weeks ago. I know Ken from PVPC is working on that, so I could reach out to him. Do you know if they, if that's been approved by the AG, or that's what they're considering proposing?
They already had it, but the new AG is saying, let's review these things. So they're, you know, they're reviewing that kind of stuff. They are, in fact, they had said that originally, the solar, the solar array near the mall, but part of it was that it was going to have a storage facility along with it, and it was okay because they had zoned it that way originally. And it hasn't been revisited yet, but it could be because of the new Attorney General. That was before the elections, and it was a new Attorney General.
Right.
So it's, but could Sunderland do the same kind of thing?
Ken, who wrote the Hadley bylaw. And so Hadley is, to be fair, Hadley is outside of the Franklin Regional Council District, so it's not something that Allison is necessarily up on. But I can touch base. I'll see Ken tomorrow. I will reach out to him and see what I can find out and get back to you with, with what I learn on where they're at with Hadley.
The other thing I'd add to that is that maybe would be more of a concern if we were considering allowing batteries there beyond the town. But because we're only allowing batteries in that one industrial district, we might be okay. If the AG came back and said that we need to expand, then maybe that would be an approach for the town.
Okay. And I'm very happy that in the C-two district, I mean, that's, that's right now. When they're writing out the laws. Okay. And I'm very happy that in the C-two district, I mean, that's, that's right now. When they're writing out the laws, they were talking about the water sources, near drinking water or such. You know, does that include if, let's say, there was a property that had a brook that ran through it or a stream? Is, should they be putting something in there about those kind of waters if, if there were a fire, because this can be a safety hazard? There are some of the gases will actually dissolve in any kind of water and could kill wildlife as opposed to drinking or, you know, your septic system or whatever. But it's, you know, like hydrogen chloride and hydrogen chloride, making hydrochloric acid and hydrochloric acid. So I don't know if they want to say anything about other kinds of water sources.
So Phyllis, we have Ellie on the Planning Board, and she's also on the Conservation Commission. And she was the one that asked that we include that language. So Ellie, do you have any comments on Phyllis's suggestion?
Yeah, that, I was mostly focused on the pure drinking water aspects when I proposed adding a setback for facilities to be a certain distance from any water supplies. And I know that anything within the buffer region of a, any, any proposed installation that's within the buffer zone of a stream or wetland or vernal pool would have to be reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission. So that would automatically give us a, depending on the type of water feature, it would give us one hundred to two hundred foot buffer right there. And so I guess that is a good question, though, if we want to consider it farther. I'm not sure that would be necessary. Is there concern?
Only, only if they take it out of the C-two district. You know, I'm thinking of a lot of places that, you know, open fields, you know, for agriculture or whatever, and have brooks running through them and, you know, that type of thing. So I guess if it were rejected from the Attorney General and came back and said, you have to do more, you have to go into rural residential, maybe you could add more at that point.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea because on the one hand, you could say, oh, well, the CONCON would never allow something near a stream. But you never know what's gonna happen in the future. So to have it in writing is not a bad, like, to codify it somewhere is not a bad idea.
So just procedurally talking, we will present this to town meeting in April. If town meeting approves it, it goes to the AG. If the AG rejects it, then we're back at square one. So nothing, we don't do any kind of horse trading with the AG. If you do this, then you can do that. It's, it's either all or nothing. Either the AG approves it, or the AG denies it, and we come back and take another bite of the apple, which is what they're doing in Wendell right now.
There, something's been approved in Wendell that the citizens are, there's like some groups that are trying to block it because they're clearcutting forests and in order to make the facility. And it's too, they think it's too close to residential, which, especially in Sunderland, being in one of those things, they have an apartment complex, and a lot of them are to the rural residential areas. So I don't know if it needs stronger language on, on how close it can be to actively populated residency area, like a, you know, even though you've, on how close it can be to actively populated residency area, like a, you know, even though you've said it's in C-two, if it comes out anything about projects being, are they gonna, you know, is somebody gonna turn around and say, oh, well, you could put it here?
Other thing about the Wendell project I should mention is, so the budget installation that, the company was Conservation Commission, but the Conservation Commission was not granting them a permit. And then they, the wholesale exemption that, the company was Conservation Commission, but the Conservation Commission was not granting them a permit. And then they, the wholesale exemption from the town zoning bylaw. So they're, they're going straight to the DPU and so, yeah, that's.
Here in Sunderland.
What? Sorry?
Could that happen here in Sunderland if they do the same, you know, if a proposal came in? And he says that there's, that was one of the first questions I was gonna ask is, has anybody, you know, approached Sunderland about this? And he says, Dana says yes. So, you know, I'm concerned that we fall into the same problems that Wendell is falling into if the wording isn't in place really strongly before it's passed by town meeting.
So Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the issue in Wendell is they tried to close the barn door after the cows had left. Basically, the petitioner got their submission in, and then Wendell tried to install a bylaw, which the AG rejected, regardless of the issue of, so in the absence of a bylaw prohibiting it, they're going directly to the DPU. Contrast that with Sunderland, where we have no active, we have interest. We do not have any active application for an installation. So if we were to have an approved bylaw that would restrict it to the C-two, I don't believe that could be appealable to the DPU.
Yeah, but is, could somebody come in before the town meeting and put an official proposal in?
No. Once, once we post our first legal notice, which was two weeks ago, then it's as though the bylaw has been adopted. The clock just stops from two weeks ago until the AG acts on this.
Excellent. Good for you. Good for you. Excellent.
The Larry part of Larry, Phyllis, a couple of questions. The granting of, or establishment of criteria for the Planning Board covers several issues which are great. And my question is, a couple of examples. Let's say, one example, potential fiscal impact is huge on somewhat untested hazardous technology with a life expectancy at this time of about twenty years. I've seen bylaws written, an example of the town of Abington, which requires decommissioning funding established in advance. And with that noise as a public health issue, these things, it can be noisy, but criteria can be written specifically to deal with that. And I have an example of that. The training for first responders is apparently, I'm told, kind of covered, which is great. But costs can rise rapidly for things like evacuation plans. Already in the United States, evacuations of a mile this year have been required because of accidents and death facilities. Shelter in place orders, which we're putting in at least one incident, which require food communication systems within the town. And they have to be, that, all of it has to be funded and established. But I meant, so we could say that under the sort of criteria that the Planning Board has the right to consider, as it's put here, potential fiscal impact. My question is, is it appropriate at this time to get specific rather than have the applicant's lawyers come in sort of ahead of us? And does that, does the question make sense?
I understand what you're saying, Larry.
I know you have something about if, when the facility is abandoned and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'm just looking for that language.
If it catches on fire, most likely they're gonna abandon it. And if you don't have funding set up to fix it, then you could take the property. But you still gotta, you still gotta pay to clean it. Is there, you know, like, Abington did something to try to make it in their, in their proposals for zoning to actually have funding in place?
Okay, so here's, here's our language. It says, removal requirements. Any large-scale ground-mounted solar electric installation and/or battery energy storage facility that has reached the end of its useful life or has been abandoned consistent with subsection one twenty-five, VK abandonment or decommissioning, shall be removed. The owner or operator shall physically remove the installation within one hundred and fifty days of abandonment or the proposed date of decommissioning. And if not, the town retains the right, after receipt of an appropriate court order or otherwise duly authorized by law, to enter and remove an abandoned hazardous decommissioned large-scale ground-mounted solar electric installation or battery energy storage facility. As a condition of site plan or special permit approval, an applicant shall agree to allow entry to remove an abandoned or decommissioned installation. The cost of the removal will be charged to the property owner in accordance with the provisions of MGL one thirty-nine three A as a tax lien on the property. The owner or operator shall notify the Planning Board by certified mail of the proposed date of discontinuing operation and plans for removal. Decommissioning shall consist of physically removing the whatever, disposal of all solid hazardous waste, stabilization or revegetation of the site, restoration of designated prime ag land to a condition suitable for resumption of agricultural production. And it goes on, there's, and then to your point, Larry, bullet number three says, financial surety. Proponents of large-scale ground-mounted solar electric or battery energy storage facilities shall provide a form of surety, either through escrow account or other form of surety approved by the Select Board to cover the cost of removal in the event the town must remove the installation and remediate the landscape in an amount and form determined to be reasonable by the Select Board, but no event exceed more than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of removal and compliance with additional requirements set forth herein, blah, 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 blah. So this, the whole bylaw is available from Wendy, and you can read this language. But I think we have.
Escrow did it.
You had me at escrow.
You had me at escrow, yeah.
So that's, thank you very, very much.
Sure.
Once you guys walk, that's not my, not my nature. So terrific. I would, that's, that's sort of big stuff. I think we all have concerns about our first responders and the costs associated with anything there. But I'd like the escrow because that covers the possible change of ownership of the property. It also covers the fact that whoever the applicant might be, in appearance, it might be some, you know, subcorporation somewhere, and that's, that's very good. We just bring up once again the noise. And for example, I'm not pushing Abington, but their rate, they cite a specific of a one-hour average of sixty decibels at the outside wall of basically the nearest occupied building. building. Things like that could be possibly helpful.
So we say, noise generated by a large-scale ground-mounted solar electric installation or battery energy storage facility and associated equipment and machinery shall conform to applicable state and local noise regulations, including DEP's Division of Air Quality Noise Regulation 310 CMR 710. A source of sound will be considered in violation of said regulation if the source increases the broadband sound level by more than 5 dB above ambient or produces a pure tone condition when an octave band center frequency sound pressure level exceeds two adjacent center frequency sound pressure levels by three decibels or more. And this goes on, there's, there's four more bullet points, just dealing.
Sounds like you have it covered.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everything looks great.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate your patience and.
I, I appreciate your vigilance and your, your persistent, persistent attendance.
What's the rest of the world to get tonight anyway?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming and asking your question.
Well, and just in terms of communication in Sunderland, this could have gone out by, by the email or, you know, that the notification of it was only in the paper. And not, it gets the newspaper. We didn't get, we didn't get an email, we didn't get anything other than, we saw it in the paper.
Right, so this is, we're, we're in November now and town meeting is in April, so if there, if there is absolutely an opportunity for us to do an additional outreach, if you feel that it's warranted, and we would be happy to do that.
Okay, I think, I'm just saying, I think that's the only reason that, I think I'm the only one who looks through the legal notices, but, you know, but there are other ways in Sunderland to get it. You know, you could, you know, they, not everybody gets the notifications for the planning board or the Board of Health or the selectmen, you know, just by, on a list, but they could send it out to, to a general email list.
Right.
To say, there's, you know, there's something coming up and it's, you know, this is the, the topic of it. You know, I find, I mean, just like I said, I think I'm the only person who actually sends, reads all the legal notices every day and picks them out, but.
So this has been the center of our universe for the last six or seven months, this is all we've been talking about, so we would be overjoyed if this room was full of people that shared our, our interest in this topic, but it really isn't very sexy, so.
No.
It's not like, not, not like when we did the red light district.
Now we've got more, more people showing up. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming.
We're going to say goodnight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodnight.
And if there are no other public comments, then I think we can close the public hearing. Allison, thank you very much for your, for your help throughout this process and for your excellent presentation tonight.
Yeah, thank you all, it's been great to work with you all, and I hope things go well at town meeting in the spring. If you, if you need help with outreach or anything like that, I'd be happy to hop on it, and I'm sure other towns are going to be looking for this type of assistance as well.
Perfect. And, and like I told Phyllis, I will reach out to Ken tomorrow and I will share with you what I learned about the Hadley situation, because honestly, I know nothing about it.
Yeah, I just saw something a couple of weeks ago, so any update from Ken would be great.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
All right.
Perfect.
So I, actually, I never saw David.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Um, so I guess he got, he said he was going to try and make it, but I guess he got preoccupied and we knew that Doug was not going to be joining us tonight.
Yeah.
Um, there is the town center committee meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Uh, and the engineering firm that they have hired is going to be here and they specifically requested planning board participation, so I will be there and Doug said he will be there, so I don't know if either of you were interested in that or not.
Yeah, I'm going to be there too.
Great.
Wendy told me to take minutes if we had a quorum, is that true?
Oh, if there's three of us, so, so, but we won't have taken any votes, so.
Okay.
It's very perfunctory, you know.
Okay.
These three members were in attendance and, you know, no.
Perfect.
The consultant presented this information and.
Yeah.
And the planning board took it under advisement.
Okay. I can do that. And then with this, with the notes for this, do I write, like, I wrote down the questions they asked, do I include those in the minutes?
So how does this, this tape work after tonight? Will it ever get played again? Does, is it on a loop or?
It's airing, but usually Jonathan will store it in, with the other archive collections that we have.
And so if someone wanted access to it, if, if they went to Wendy and said, can we see the, the public hearing, then Wendy would know how to get in touch with you guys and.
Yes.
And, and that could be arranged. Perfect.
So I can just write that?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So did the zoning board, switching gears to do our updates, did the zoning board get involved with the dope shop changing owners?
I have not been informed with anything about that.
I, I read about it in the paper, that, that there's a new owner from Watertown or something.
The one in Sunderland?
Right, the one that, so you guys have already had a hearing.
Yeah.
Because it required a special permit.
Yep.
And you, I think you granted it.
We approved it, yeah.
Yeah, but now, now whoever you, you granted it to is no longer the owner, so I'm just wondering, I, I read that in the paper, that.
Okay.
That it was some kind of family construction company.
Interesting.
From just outside of Boston, that is the new owner of it, so it's not Cheech and Chung.
I just read that in the paper.
I, I could not believe the line, the line was all the way around, they had police details.
Yeah.
On both sides of the building, the line of people standing to get in was all the way, so there's that veranda.
Yeah.
And then out into the parking lot, and it said in the paper today that you had to have paid or agreed to pay by $100 worth of merchandise.
Wow.
In order to get a ticket to see them, so.
I just heard about the traffic that was around there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's crazy. I will ask about it, I haven't heard anything about it. I know that when that meeting was over, they had stated that there was like a really long road ahead of them before they could even start construction.
Okay.
Because of the, like, the approval process.
Yeah.
But they, the people that came before us, they've, they own a bunch of them.
Uh huh.
So they're very well-versed in.
Yeah.
What needs to happen, but I'll ask, I haven't, the ZBA's been quiet, we haven't met or anything.
All right. And what's happening with 325 Amherst Road, Ellie? So I got an email from Jennifer today saying that she had been out and met with the, with the property owner and determined that there were no vernal pools or other, so Warner Brothers or Allstate is, is buying property adjacent to their property to fix.
Okay, I had to leave the Concom meeting early because we had a really long meeting and I had my son with me.
Oh.
So I missed that part.
Okay, so apparently they're trying, they're trying to fix a drainage problem on, on a property that they own.
Okay.
So they bought the property next door to absorb the problem that they have.
Okay, yeah, this is around when I left.
And so they want to come to the planning board sometime in the next couple of months to do an A and R and, and put the properties together as a single property. So that's the only planning board involvement, but the, all of the emails that I was seeing from Jennifer seemed to say that she had no problems at all with what they were proposing.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good, that was right when I was leaving.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
And, and while you were there, did anything else come up?
Um, well, the reason why it took so long was that we had somebody from Mass Wildlife present on the new biomap layer because they update, this is the third update, I think, of the biomap layer on Mass GIS, and she went through like some background on the, this latest update is only less than a year old, and, okay, I'm sorry, it's the second update, the first one was 2001, and she went through different aspects of the biomap layer and priority habitat and went, looked a little bit, looked at like what's online in general, but then also what's specific to Sunderland as far as the layers and what we can learn from the biomap layers in Sunderland. And I actually wondered if the planning board would want to hear her presentation at some point, she's doing outreach to Concoms and planning boards.
And where is she from?
She's from Mass Wildlife.
And so where is her office?
Um, Westboro, but the presentation was remote.
Zoom?
Yes. Yes, so I don't think it's urgent at all, but I thought it was interesting and if people want to know more. I think when you speak to the Concom, most of the people are relatively familiar with the biomap layer.
Yeah.
And maybe the planning board isn't, like, maybe not every member is as familiar with it as a tool.
So how about if we put this on the agenda again next month, so when we have a full complement, we can discuss it?
Yeah. That was the big part of it. I know that the, they've made progress removing the fill off of Russell Street. I would say it's between a quarter and a third of the flat pile is still left to the last time I went by.
She is in a shovel on the wheelbarrow.
A pretty small excavator, a pretty small excavator. But I, that was over a week ago that I went by, so I don't know if it's quite done, and I think they also talked about that after I had to leave at the Conservation Commission. But the neighbors were not at the meeting, so that's probably a good sign.
That is a good sign, yeah.
So progress is being made?
Yeah, I think progress is being made, yeah.
That's good.
All right, then the two, is it one or two outstanding projects that are lingering? One is Cozy Corners, I haven't heard anything on Cozy Corners, and then there, I guess there's been some outreach from the owner of Shidlofa Estates regarding the, the undeveloped lot and what, what potential uses could happen there, and that's something that we have discussed at length in the past, so.
Yeah. Do you know, I saw that the property, we discussed it before because there was a potential they wanted to do like a storage facility, I thought, like heading out of town towards Bubbs Barbecue, the property on the right side?
Like near Plum Tree?
Right, so he came and met with us, remember? He, 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 his father or someone in his family ran KSE and, or maybe he did, and he didn't want to do that anymore.
Yeah.
He said that storage was more lucrative, so he was, because we met with those scientists from UMass.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That were using cotton and.
Yeah.
Making something out of cotton, energy or something out of cotton. And he was going to victim and just turn that structure into storage and he wanted to have additional storage on that property. Remember, he wanted to put an access road.
Yeah.
Off from the driveway to the church.
Yeah.
And we told him that that's not a public way, so he was just going to do something from his existing curb cut, so.
Yeah.
Do you think something's happening there?
Well, not, I don't know if it was that, it's the house.
The White House north of, is that what you're going to have?
Yeah, they just renovated the White House.
The one where they had the barn?
They had it for sale.
That, didn't you change the zoning of it?
We did.
Because people wanted to have weddings?
Yeah.
That one just sold. It just sold, so I was just curious.
Huh.
Um, because I know someone had talked about, like, doing something with the property previously, but.
Huh.
I was just curious.
No, I, I don't know.
I was being nosy, I don't know.
I, I was being nosy, I'm too.
I don't know who the owner is or what.
They did beautiful work on the house before it sold.
Yeah.
You know, it turned out really nice, that renovation, so.
It did.
I'm happy.
Yeah, it's, it's a very historic property.
Is that, didn't they talk about moving the house or something?
They had asked whether, what, what would be, some potential buyer had asked about moving the house, so I don't know if it's this owner or.
Huh.
Wow.
Just curious. Um, there hasn't really been anything in the mail either, just like the normal notices around for fences or what have you, nothing crazy, nothing exciting.
All right, is there anything else? I can't think of anything right now.
What was the, you got notification for this, Ellie, an email?
Yeah, on October 16th, and so I subscribe to a couple.
Yeah.
Listor, like, the couple of the interest groups, I'm guessing it was the select board one, but maybe I'm in a general one too.
I will talk to Jeff, I'll see him tomorrow, so.
Okay.
I'll ask him.
Yeah.
What more we can do to solicit interest. I mean, we don't have to have another formal public hearing.
Yeah.
Because we made no changes, there were no proposed changes, but, you know, as a effort to make anyone that missed it aware of what it is that we're doing, we could definitely do some kind of less formal, you know.
Yeah.
Just downstairs at our regular Zoom meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
We could do another.
Yeah.
Update in January or February.
Okay.
But if, if there was some way that we could make everyone aware that that was going to happen.
And then besides that, we just are going before the town.
Right, because there was no, there was no proposed change to what, so if we changed what our draft language was.
Yeah.
That would trigger another public hearing, but we didn't change.
So that's it.
So.
Great.
We, we've met all the requirements and we're good for town meeting, but what I'm suggesting is we go above and beyond the requirements and just try to do another outreach.
Anyway, perfect.
So that's all I've got for tonight.
Did the minutes look good?
Minutes look good and I, I just would rather. Minutes look good and I, I just would rather wait until.
Sure.
We've got a full board, because I don't think anyone's waiting for them down in Wendy's office, so if we just do October and November at our December meeting, if we can.
Yeah.
Get more than three people.
Sure.
So that we have.
Should we look at the date of the December meeting?
What is the second Tuesday in December?
The 12th.
Seems good.
Yeah?
Yep. At seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, yeah.
Perfect.
All right, guys, if there's nothing else, I'll close the meeting. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.